Maybe. So.
Yep.
Bye. So. So.
Morning.
Uh, morning Jamie and gang.
Morning, it is uh, November fourth eight AM support session for the planning board. Uh, we have one item on the agenda this morning, which is Wegmans for multi-tenant sign package. Uh, we have. We have on four Wegmans.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so here again, so. Bear with me, we're trying, I'm having issues again.
Would you mind just introducing yourself?
I know.
Hello. Are you answering?
Would you guys mind just introducing yourselves?
Yep, we are, we're trying to hook in first here, um. We're having issues with that link and and I think it's because that link's in a PDF, it's giving us issues, it comes up a blank screen here, but. Somebody's doing a workaround here, so introduction is from the real estate group, Tim Dollinger. Uh, Tom Bedderidge and myself, land planning, our peers. Uh, thank you very much, Tim is hooking up now, so um, if you can bear with a couple, just me going audio here for a bit. Um, I'm on my cellphone, that's the only way I can get in here. And we think it's because that link was embedded in a PDF, Tim has worked a workaround. Um, so thank you very much, what I'd like to do, would you like me to start with just an overview of our thoughts and then get into obviously your thoughts and then more details? Or would you want to start off? Alright, so if we could, could we split this into the discussion into two issues, one? The immediate, if you will, and those are my words relative to Luma's wanting to open up in November? And have a sign up there, and I understand temporary banners are possible, but fourteen days kind of doesn't make sense. To have it up and then down if they don't have.
Being recorded.
Sign out.
Um, are you in Tim?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think we're going backwards, let's not talk about the temporarys, because you know, if we can come to a conclusion on.
Yeah, Jamie, I understand, I I agree, I just wanted to just get a high thing real quickly, but I agree with you, we don't want to deal with that, uh.
So let's, let's talk about the multi-tenant sign packet, which I think is where we are, trying to come up with something that's um. That the board can get kind of that. And I think you have some visuals.
Sorry, Jamie, we lost total communication again, I apologize. So if we could separate the two, and then the second one being the, obviously, the channelized uh. Lettering that we have, the uh, the channel itself, rather than penetrations for each of these signs, if we can talk to that, that would be great, so. Uh, we'll defer to you, we can go to some photos that we sent along the way, whatever works for you.
Yeah, do you, do you see on screen?
Yes, I can, thank you, we're trying to get it, we've got it on our monitor. And I have a big monitor.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. How come, what's this here going on the screen, okay, we're just taking the part, yes, we can, Jamie can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. So here again, what you see here is behind the Luma's, you see the channel lettering, if you will. Uh, the channel itself for the lettering, now, here again, this is a graphic imposed over a photo, so of of the wall. So what happens is, and we'll have a couple pictures which I've sent you, you can see where um. Once we pull out the channel, or if you have the letters, a lot of penetration, if you do it independently, if you have the channel, it's a lot easier to. Paint over and have it blend in with the background of the facade and fewer penetrations, it really comes down to that, and there's a couple. Very good photos, I think it was Big Lots, if you can scroll down, if you have them to scroll or however, you can see that um. Not that one, there's another one actually, I think with Big Lots, I put right in there, maybe not. Uh, you cannot actually see. The background, well, that's, actually, this is a good one, so here's one where he had it, but it was painted, so you really can't notice it. Where the channel was, so we think that. That works best for everybody, number than with the efficiencies of getting signs up and down, which don't happen every day. And then fewer penetrations to deal with later on, to no detriment as far as view of the building uh, from the public. That's, that's the key point here. Uh, it, we, we think it works quite well, and if I read and saw Eric's email correctly, that channel. They talk about channels themselves as well as box signs. So I'm not quite sure where channels were not allowed in the code, and I could have been meeting, uh, missing the obvious.
So this is Eric, channel letters are allowed, I think. So for us, when we're talking about. The horizontal bar behind the channel letters, we're calling that the raceway, the channel letters are just the. The channel, the letter itself is three D, so you could have a channel letter without the raceway. So channel letters are allowed everywhere, box signs are more of just the. Like a cabinet sign with like the. Plastic face. Uh, those are not allowed in certain areas, but channel letters are allowed everywhere, I think the discussion today is whether or not the raceway. The horizontal piece that it's mounting to is allowed.
And so a, so a channel, what we see as a channel is the, you know, here again, a rectangle. Uh, which pick covers and 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 to which all this individual letters are attached. You're not, you, you don't equate channel with a raceway then.
The channel levels are different.
No, I understand.
Channel is the actual letter itself.
Right.
Can I ask? What's the intent, why, why no raceways, is there, is there a specific reasoning behind? Why you'd like to eliminate raceways, is there some sort of?
That. It's an aesthetic. Stance, I guess.
So it's usually painted the same color as the facade, right, so they're, they're. Generally speaking, you can hardly notice them unless you are really looking for them.
Yeah. Definitely, definitely effectively wrestling. Right, is, you understand, we understand the intent of painting it the same color as the background, however. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you're never truly matching the background color. It's a different material, a different set or a different uh, finish, so you might get the color that's close. But you're not matching, it's not disappearing, still have a bar that runs behind the letters. Creates a shadow line on the building.
So when we install the signs, uh, we are asked for a color code, and that is actually provided to our sign. Uh, contractor, um, if is uh, some of our facades do are different colors, they, they will match them on site. To that, whatever, whatever that background facade color is.
So we have. Yeah, sorry, I have a question, so if, if you have successfully installed this over many tenants on many of your facilities. Uh, you know, we've got, there's different geometries, there's different sign. Uh, you know, sign lettering, do you have any photos of? Of success, successful installs, different configurations, just so that the board can see. You know, where this might go?
Actually, that's where I thought I sent a Big Lots uh, image, I'm gonna grab that now as we.
Well, I think that was showing though, why the channel letters caused more. Issues with the painting, I mean, yeah, we have, we have hundreds of examples of. Existing tenants where we have matched the raceway that have channel letters attached to that raceway.
Okay, let's try to grab one now.
Yeah, I'm just actually trying to see if I can on Google Maps here.
Alright, and I'm gonna check.
I guess what I'm saying is, is showcase, show, show off what you're proposing and how, how it's gonna look with examples of, of other successful installs. Of the final install.
Yeah, that, that is our typical package, it's actually our requirement for all our, all our tenants, I mean, if, if, I mean. Being Wegmans, we are particular about how our facades look and how our plazas look, so I mean, if there was an issue, we would, we would definitely say something. Or uh, you know, or not allowed, but I mean, this has been our bed package for years.
I'm just looking for a graphic, I'm just looking to look for, to look at something on the screen.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah, we'd probably be able to do that quickly here, uh.
So for the actual Wegman signs, does that have this similar? Raceway behind it?
No, and that's due to the size, right, and that's what I was saying earlier, is, is when you have large channel letters. Then the raceway becomes challenging because those letters are so large and so heavy. Um. But for smaller signs, the signs that are on our tenant plaza spaces. Uh, they really work very well.
Well, in addition to that, our signs don't come and go. We, we, they're.
Right, no, I, I, I agree with that, I just, I was trying to find a Wegman's example with the raceway and I couldn't, but that makes sense enough.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
How uh, deep is the raceway and the sign that's on top of it, like, how many inches?
Um. Yeah, our, our, our max for our signs is thirty-six inches, usually, I don't remember the exact specs of the, of the, of the raceway behind, but it's probably like around. Ten inches, ten inches, ten inches.
Yeah, it's on, and it's on the commercial sign criteria, I believe that we've sent you guys all those specifications for the raceway and the channel letters.
Here it is again, mounted great, mount grace ways, let's see. Maximum sign length. Six.
And did you go through your standard and note how it fit into our code with the square footage and everything, or did you just hand us your standard without comparing it to our code?
I had meant to do that calculation in advance, so just, so we got it out, I just sent the standards here.
You know, that standard is across all of our plazas that what we sent.
Yeah, but could you compare it to our code and show us that it matches, please? Okay, thank you.
We're looking at your specs here, can you tell us about depth, that height of the letters, like how far it comes out from the building, the raceway and of the letters?
Are you looking for a standard depth of that raceway, do you have something in mind?
Yeah, well, what are you composing?
I'm trying to grab our standards here again, commercial, I don't see it in there too. It's one pager.
It's in there, it's in there.
You gotta have a detail.
It's on the lease.
It's on the lease one. We'll, we'll get those, I apologize, we should have had that in advance. We'll take to the side.
So not project more than six inches beyond the fascia.
So what are you?
So they're less than six inches.
The raceway. Raceway, or the letters.
The, the letters do not project more than six inches beyond the side fascia, so. Believe what that is saying is it is not projecting, the raceway is not projecting out more than six inches from the facade.
That's what I'm just trying to get the language, so we have, in terms of the construction of the sign, you got the, the wall fascia. You've got the raceway, and you've got the channel letters, or the letters that are on there. The total depth being no more than six inches. So the raceway plus the ladder depth is no more than six inches.
Yes.
That's what I would assume by what it said.
Correct. And so.
Of the lighting? Your lighting standard?
Yep, so.
Yes.
Tenants are allowed to have those channel letters illuminated. With either white or red LEDs. Is our standard for our, again, our standard commercial sign criteria. And then, you know, this is our lease language, and then they would come in front of you guys and submit their actual sign package for approval. And then that sign package would change based on the local code and the municipality and the requirements of them.
Jamie. So.
Maybe you should add a little note into your standard saying. Plus per the local code.
Yeah, so that's in the lease language?
We, we could share that with you.
Yeah, that's a part of that sign. Yeah, they're already limiting the colors.
Yep.
And then they're already in line with us.
Yeah, we're not able to project it there, I mean, no.
Uh, not if you took my cordy, probably.
Yeah, I'm not hooked up to it, I would really, I reason I pull up.
Send it to him and even pull it up. Right?
Yeah.
We're gonna send you a couple photos right now from, you know, street, uh, Google Street View.
Share your screen? We'll let you share. We'll let you share your screen.
Yeah, in a second here, we're grabbing it, we're sending. The photos from one to another laptop, yeah.
I, I, I know, but we're also. I don't, I don't, that's a little bit, I understand that.
Yeah.
You just have Street View Rich Month, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, so we are looking, this is kind of geared more towards the board here, if we're looking at this. As an individual plaza, as an individual multi-tenant sign package. You know, I think that's where we have to start.
Well, so when you say individual plaza, are we talking now just the strip plaza versus the entire Wegmans plaza, I, I thought I had heard.
Oh, yes, yeah, because they're two separate parcels.
Good, okay, yeah, I understand.
Uh, we'll have another conversation at the end of this, but.
Yeah.
Yes, looking at just this strip plaza, and I think we need to, as a board, look at this as one multi-tenant sign package.
In the whole town.
In the whole town. You know, and does it? Fit with? You know, the rest of the aesthetic in the area? With the rest of the plaza?
Yeah, I, I also believe the, the other signs currently. At that shopping center are, are all on raceways also. Currently. I was trying to find that screen on uh, Google View, but unfortunately, the, the vehicle didn't go in front of those. Times there.
Did you have any, didn't you have another vision?
Yes.
Oh, he's got it to him, alright.
Yeah, I can, I can share the view of one of our plazas where we have that. Raceway matching the facade with the channel letter signs.
Right. So can I ask you a simple question and miss, maybe miss the obvious, since we haven't been before you quite some time? This multi-tenant signage. Code requirement. Came into effect. It, what, what year did that come into effect, because this is the first we have heard it here, at least in our offices.
I mean, we did one for Solvay Bank at uh, your property on James Street. Just recently. This has been in the code for many years, isn't it?
It's only single tenant building there.
But, yeah, as I say.
I don't think it would apply.
It would not Wegman's property.
Yeah. On, on, right, on, on a single, on a single lot, so this is um. You know, if, if, if there was not, I think that, that this plaza was up, went up before the multi-tenant sign. Code went into that.
So Jamie, yeah, that's, I'm just curious, I mean, it, it's kind of a moot point because it is what it is, but. I don't ever recall doing it even with Solvay Bank unless they somehow.
Yeah. Yeah, we did.
Oh, it was the basic, yeah, it was a basic one, because we just had the store and Solvay.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot, there wasn't a lot to it.
Okay.
Um, it's made these, these strip malls that, that it. That is, are the biggest concern, but anytime there's more than one tenant. Um, we do them, this particular project, you know, had predated this code, so now. You know, now it had, it was come up, so we're just trying to bring the consistency and, and look at uh. The, what the multi-tenant sign package intent is, which is to provide a uniformity, to allow that. Once this is in place, you don't ever have to come to this board again, it's all done administratively, and then it's simple, easy to follow. Um, fits with the uh, aesthetic of the area, and not every multi-tenant sign package is gonna be the same, there's gonna be guidelines. Right?
So, yeah, and I appreciate all that, so yeah, going real quick, you Solvay and Wegmans, that, here again, it did come across. In my, my recall, because I worked on that, that it was a, a sign package like this because of the uniqueness, this is a, a really a large plaza. Certainly understand you want consistency, my bigger question though is. You know, we're pre-existing, as you say, to the code, and we have a lot of signs up there, there may or may not be in, in concert with your current code. Um. And more specifically, Luma's now, so that's what we're asking you of Luma's application as they're proposing. With consideration of their opening up in November, being treated. You know, on its own merit, if you will. Knowing that Wegmans, we have to present, prepare a. Uh, multi-tenant sign package, but it's gonna be existing conditions, obviously.
Is, is the intent to have uniformity amongst our site, or uniformity amongst your town, I think you just mentioned you were gonna have different.
There's two, there's, I, both, both are. Are in consideration. And, and where a plaza is, and how visual it is, all of those are gonna play into uh. What's going on here, so we're looking at a multi-tenant sign package that, that you're proposing. There are some, I think, attractive things to this board about it, which is the limitation of colors, whereas our ordinarily, our code has a more. Uh. Variety of colors, that there would only be lit white or red, I think that's, that's an attractive thing, so. This board needs to look at the whole. The whole thing.
Yes, I mean, it's just white.
I mean.
I mean, and my, my only, my, my fear is that the post goes in and then. The tenant next to that goes in and they're red, the tenant next to them is red, but the one after that is white.
How do you guys? Control that? Is it? Either or?
I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we provide the tenant, uh, as, as mentioned, our sign criteria, but then what they also provide us a rendering. To let us know.
Can you, can you try getting closer to the mic, we can't really hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so uh, as, as mentioned earlier, um, you know, all our tenants are provided their sign criteria in our lease. And then, be, even before that they sign off on, or I'm sorry, before they install the sign, they provide us a rendering, which, which we, uh, which we look at and uh, make sure that they follow that, that criteria.
Before they submit it to you?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I think if you looked at plazas in your town, the uniformity amongst our signage has gotta be. Greater than what you're seeing in other multi-tenant buildings, I mean, we want the same thing that you guys want, we don't want a lot of. Different colors, different signs, different shapes. We want to be able to have a. Consistent look, look amongst our plazas as well, that's why we have that commercial sign criteria.
Yeah.
You know, I guess from a town standpoint, if you said you just wanted white LEDs and illumination, that would be the town's. Prorgative to, to, when you have sign packages submit. Um.
Yeah, but we, we do manage through consistency. Because we don't want the other tenants to be asking, hey, why can't I have this, why can't we have this, and also, we also like the appearance to be consistent.
Same.
Yeah.
That, that's exactly what we're trying, trying to do, um.
But I feel like that isn't what our plaza delivers already?
Yeah.
Alright, so the, the, whoever just highlighted that. Right here.
Yeah.
It's white during the day and red at night, it's not red letters and white letters, it is consistent across the entire. Tenant packages, white letters during the day, illuminated red at night. And that is consistent.
I, I, I can't speak to that off my, off the top of my head, but it is either illuminated red or white at night.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how does the board feel about that as one of the criteria?
Well, it's in there.
I understand that, they're proposing, it's not something we've ever had in, it's actually more limiting than we.
Right, I appreciate the. The. Uniformity that it creates. You know, my hesitation was. A little bit of Wild West in terms of, you know, you can pick red or white, and you get this kind of.
Well.
As long as, like, they're all white during the day and red at night, that fits with the rest of the plaza. Like our city and Wegmans and all those are. Right, so.
Now, I will say this, the larger tenants, we have a little more leeway with if it's a large national tenant. We do allow them to brand their signage such with their. National branding and their recognized. Branding across their chain.
Alright, that's number six, right below it.
Well, that'll be, I mean, we'll talk about that as far as the bigger plaza, but just as far as this type of smaller sort of plaza, which is all we're talking about. Then.
Okay.
The question is, is that? Acceptable? I'm asking the board.
Yeah, so I think. If we're, if we're boiling down, we're boiling it down to the raceway, it's to be. Color matched to the background.
Just a question about that, your signs that are currently up, like Pier Bar and Spoke, uh, are those raceways matched to the background?
Yes.
Said, did you say yes?
Yeah, yeah. Those are newer signs, those newer signs are definitely around, they're, they're on a raceway. We would not allow them.
But they, you're saying their color matched to the background, they're, they're very.
Yeah.
Obvious, but looking at a picture.
Do you have the photo?
Like Google Apps?
Right, so that's just what we're trying to get at is.
Like, is, is that what it would look like?
Like, 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 alright, so. I don't know if you're seeing this, this photo on here, that's not the same shopping center, but this is what we are speaking about.
We're gonna pull up Google Maps for the shopping center.
Yeah, wha- whatever reason, Google Maps did not go in front of that small tenant building, that's why.
No, Tom, I don't think they could see what your, I didn't, I haven't shared this yet.
We're bringing up a picture now of a plaza.
I'm gonna share my screen here, hopefully this doesn't. Create.
Hobby Lobby.
Huge issues here. Oh, no, they're, they're showing their screen.
Yeah, that's the only one, it's Hobby Lobby though.
Yeah, but we can't.
Yeah, we're not, let's not look at Hobby Lobby, if you go back down the entry drive and look at the building. Driving. Eric's driving, oh.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't go directly up front.
Yeah, so if you look at like Pier Bar and like Spoke, are those color matched to the background?
Yeah, it's a little off there, but I should have been.
The supercut.
Front looks like it's not.
The supercut, look at the other ones.
Well, the, the, if it's, if it's not, whether it gets changed out, yes, do.
Right, and I, I understand. You know, we set up the, the multi-tenant sign package, and that criteria that's in there is that they're white during the day, they're red at night, raceway needs to be color matched to the background. You know, in the event that you ever change the color of that building, you will need to change the color of the raceway in the background. Um.
Yeah, that makes, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, I, I, really, guys, I think that's all we're looking for is. I, I mean, again, we're going for consistency amongst our plaza too, we want a first-class look.
What is your, what's your stance in terms of, you know, standardizing? Size? It. Good.
I'm not sure, wait a minute.
In what way?
Our, our, the supercut size while like.
Yeah, they're all thirty-six inches, because we don't want them to have bigger signs, bigger signs or smaller signs, but if you look at that Pier Bar.
Like, we really cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, alright, so yes, we, those are also our. We do standardize the size, we wanna make sure that they're not large signs and then small signs, but if you look at that Pier Bar sign, the reason why it's smaller. Is because they have to have thirty-six inches away from the demising walls, and that's why it's smaller.
I know, I just.
Great, good criteria.
Can I ask a basic question?
Of course.
I mean, tenants come and go, but Plaza's been up here for a while, these signs have been up here. Are there concerns on the look of this building? And these signage speci- specifically?
I wouldn't say there's concerns, no, but we're looking at this now as a multi-tenant sign package, so we're establishing what standards will go forward on this, I think.
Well, well, that, in that leads into my question, we have.
By the board.
Well, and, and, and the standards here, they might be a little different, I, I'm not even sure if they're different, quite frankly, but. My, my point here, it's. I, 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 I think that the, I, from our perspective, it looks good, it fits in a plaza, to this date, we haven't heard any concerns. Uh, from the town that this look is off, so the standards that we've already set and continue to have. For our tenants and our leases, is what you see up there, there's a variety of signs, they look different in some regards with their lettering and the size, et cetera. But we feel, and I, the town did, since they've approved it along the way, in scale, and there's continuity, so I'm not sure what is trying to be achieved. I understand the big picture of multi-tenant signage package, so you see, and make a determination if a strip plaza. Are a lot of multi-tenants work together? But I'm not sure where the challenge is from the town's point of view on what the look this is and what Luma's presenting. Including the raceway.
Yeah, it's not about Luma, so let, let's, let's kind of back, circle back around. The idea is, this plaza did not have a multi-tenant sign package, it predated the sign package, all signs are supposed to come in compliance. So we're trying to do a multi-tenant sign package, and this is, this is why we're having this discussion. Because the first impression was, we don't want channel letters and this and that, now we're coming in and having this discussion, I mean, the raceway. Because the first question was, we don't want channel letters and this and that. Now we're coming in and having this discussion, I mean, the raceway, sorry. So now we're having this discussion about um, but, let's look at this plaza as an individual freestanding plaza. Let's look at the multi-tenant sign package. Um, the, the basic idea, because not everyone has a stricter code. Most, most plazas are like, put up whatever sign you want. We understand Wegmans is different. I think this board's willing to look at that differently. And as it, as it's standalone multi-tenant sign package, some of your things are more restrictive, and I think that this board is inclined to accept the more restrictive uh, things such as the illuminated only white during the day and red at night, or something like that. Um, possibility because of the way this plaza looks that, and the material that's on the background facade behind the the signage, maybe the raceway is okay if it matches. That's what I'm hearing. You know, that, that's a possibility. There are some where it's all corrugated and it would never work. So that's what we're trying to do is come up with the individual plan. That's what the discussion is. So I'm gonna throw that, this back to the board on, you know, the, the raceway, the color matching, the illumination, the different colors, the more stringent standards in here, because it's your, it's your call.
There's a trick. And it's all pre-existing. Right? I mean, you're not asking to, you know.
No, we're not asking to change anything that's there. It would be, if, if we're saying no raceway, it would be an eventual thing.
Right, so as a tenant turns over, that multi-tenant sign package stays in effect for any future tenant. We're not asking you to change out the current tenant signs. Just ask people turn over.
If that it.
Yeah, I, I think you might need to just explain what the triggering event is though, in order, you know, this needs to be brought up to uh, our multi-tenant uh, code in compliance with the code moving forward, right? And the true, the triggering event is the replacement of the Lumen sign.
Right.
Yeah, so once the.
That's, that's how this started.
Sign package, all future signs, when something turns over, would just come in for permitting. And would have to meet the requirements of that multi-tenant sign package.
Right, well, and, and we appreciate all that you said there and understand your perspective. The concern here is, here again, not to digress a bit, but it's relevant. Luma wants to open in November, and the concern is the timeframe for developing. And maybe it's not going to be lengthy, but just worst-case scenario, the duration to create a multi-tenant sign package that the town reviews, comes back, comments back and forth. Ideally, it would be, you know, within days, but I don't know that, and the concern is if it goes too far, then Luma's won't have a sign for their opening. There's, there's our concern, asking if they could be grandfathered at this point, with consideration of they're within our strict design standards that I think, obviously, it's your first glance at this, that you think works. And they, in essence, that sign would be in concert with all of our other signs that we have up there today on a pre-existing, so they're just one percentage, you know, a small percentage of the overall, and it's in line with that, and if it works good, knowing moving forward to your point, whatever the ultimate multi-sign package is approved by the town is applicable to the strip plaza.
I, I guess the first question is, are, are, is this board inclined towards something similar to what is up here on the Wegmans, uh, standards?
No, because I can't read it, and other, I would rather that they compare it to our code and show how it compares, because I don't think, I don't think that they, they did the due diligence yet, like, show that your standard matches our code. So we know that it's within our code, so when somebody comes to us and says, but Wegmans did it, we can say, well, that was grandfathered in, and then we can say, and when they did their, you know, multi-tenant sign package, we did go through everything and they were code compliant.
We, we can do that. We, we will, we will get to that comparison.
Yes, I guess just, it, 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 sorry, this is terminology, I, I ma- we manage tenants in thirty-five different municipalities, and have stores in a hundred four, a hundred and fourteen different municipalities. And the board approves each sign that is brought to them by the tenants during their approval process to be put up.
Oh, oh, we would, we would do that only if it were a freestanding building. Would we, right now, we're just saying, here, the same thing that you're doing when you have your tenant, follow these rules and they won't bother you. And when, when your multi-tenant sign package, when your sign package matches our multi-tenant sign standards, then that's up. There's nothing, you're never gonna see us again.
Yeah, no, right, no, no, I, I, and I understand that, and we're gonna, we're gonna do that, right? We're gonna move forward and put together that multi-tenant sign package and how it relates to your code. But before a sign goes up in your town, are, aren't you seeing that sign? Isn't the board approving of that sign when they're coming in to put out that exterior sign?
No.
No, it's usually just a permitting process, uh, unless unless a multi-tenant sign package needs to be done, or unless it's a freestanding sign. If it's just a building sign and it doesn't need a multi-tenant package, or we already got one, then it's just a building permit.
Right.
And the sign not reviewed as part of the building permit?
It's only here for the code, not for a status.
Yeah, once this multi-tenant sign package is approved for this, for this, all these tenants, they won't come back in front of the board, just.
Okay, that's, that provides some clarity for you.
That's what it's for. It's really for ease. So I, what I heard from Jenny is, we need to make sure that this compares to, uh, our sign package criterion, and then it's even a little stricter, and, and if it be the raceway is going to be a permitted situation, it needs to match, and how that wording is gonna be put in there, we get to talk.
Okay, we'll answer that.
Whatever else, you know, is going to make, whatever else is going to make that raceway acceptable, which might be more stringent than ordinarily would happen.
So, just to make sure I understand, just my understanding, so there's, there's, there's no way that we can approve Luma's signs without the, without, without completing, completing the package first?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, because, I mean, to be honest with you, that, these signs are critical to our tenants and their success, and that's why we're asking these questions. I mean, the opening days are, are critical in order to make sure that they're gonna be a tenant there for a long time. And also to make sure they're successful.
Do, do they allow, do you guys allow a banner? Can they just do a printed banner?
You do a banner for fourteen days, uh, have to submit it to the department for, for vote, to make sure it meets code.
So how quickly can you get material together to get a multi-tenant sign package? I mean, I understand that Luma's wants to, to open sometime in November. Do they have an actual, you know, ribbon cutting day and opening?
I was, I was just told mid, mid-November. I mean, I, I have reached out to the tenants for, for more information, and I'm waiting to hear back.
It's, as far as our, first of all, we'll do the comparison that, uh, you're looking for Wegman standards versus code, so that's our court. We'll do that. Secondly, the sign application, multi-tenant sign application. Uh, in this particular case, we're presenting the existing signage as well as Luma's on it, right? If for the planning board's formal review or administrative review and approval.
We, we.
Public hearing. With a public hearing.
There's no public hearing.
Yeah, we don't do public hearings.
No public.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I just wanna make sure, and then also for our real estate folks here to understand that. Because that obviously plays into the timeline, the timeline here, that we're not into that, uh, um, we don't have that parameter if we'll deal with as far as schedules. So would it be? What's a timeframe? If we got this to you in a timely manner, obviously, do we wait one week, two weeks? Uh, do you stay on your standard schedule to review this again, or could we have a special work session?
This needs to be a site plan application for multi-tenant sign package. This Thursday, the sixth is our deadline for the meeting on November twentieth.
Well, wait a minute, I thought it wasn't a planning board member, I mean.
No, the multi-tenant sign.
Package is a plenty short.
Yes, there are, there are two things. One, we need to approve as, as a planning board, we need to approve the multi-tenant sign package, which is the rules and the framework for what the signage in the plaza is. That's what this board will approve. Moving forward, if you have a tenant that comes in and wants to put up a sign, as long as they adhere to the criteria within that multi-tenant, multi-tenant sign package, it's an administrative review by Alana at her office. It doesn't come to.
I, I understand it, but I'd asked initially if this has to go to a public hearing and now.
But if, if it will go in front of the board, it's not, well, maybe.
Yeah, there's a difference between a public hearing and a board meeting.
I, I, I really, I, I totally understand. I've been before your boards and many boards. I understand it. My concern is when I was asking the question, it was relative to timeline, to for an expeditious res- submittal and review and sign off, so that Luma's can have a sign open for their grand, uh, a sign for their opening. But now with a planning board meeting, you have, isn't, what's the criteria for submittal and then review period, and then scheduling of a meeting? So what's that timeframe? What's the deadline and what's the next meeting again?
So the deadline, the deadline for the multi-tenant sign package, and I would, I would encourage you to, to talk to Eric and get all of the, the materials that you need together for that one.
Can we talk right now, since he's online and time is of essence?
Yeah, I think you're the eleven points, basically, those from the design guidelines. There's the eleven points.
No, no, what's the, what's the submittal deadline for the next meeting?
So this Thursday, the sixth, is the deadline to meet the November twentieth planning board meeting.
Which will be well past the opening date of Luma's at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, we do not have enough time to to resolve this and have this as part of, I mean, we have a, a planning board meeting this Thursday night, and then our next one is on the twentieth. So we don't have the ability to, to turn this around any faster than the twentieth, and this board would be working between Eric and you guys and our board to get all the materials and get this ready to be approved on the twentieth. As long as it meets kind of all of that criteria, that, I mean, as fast as we do it, that's the fastest that we can do it. You can apply and get a temporary sign, which is a fourteen day, which would get you past that uh, the twentieth date, you could just be ready to pop it on the wall on the twentieth. And you can do a temporary.
What's the timelines for temporary signage? The application, submittal, end date, review by planning staff, planning board.
Yeah, the temporary sign is just an administrative review. And it could be applied for, I don't know what that application looks like.
It's not even an application. You would, uh, just contact our office. You would send it, uh, basically showing dimensions, like showing what the sign is.
To whose, to whose attention?
Eric.
You send it to Eric.
Was, was Luma's ever explained this process when they met with you?
We have, I don't think we've heard from them.
We have not talked to Luma's at all. You've been our only point of contact.
When they submitted your building permit.
Yeah, I mean, they, I'm not sure who, who they spoke to. We have them, but they reached out to me about this process.
So Derek White is our code officer. That's probably who you spoke with.
They might have put in for a sign permit, and that triggers us saying we need a multi-tenant sign, yeah, which I'm sure they were told at that time.
So, so, and bear with me, because here again, land planning versus real estate here, so Luma's never had to submit any plans to you for that, just the building department?
They.
If they submitted a bill, if they submitted a permit application for a sign, we would have told them at that time that they would require a multi-tenant sign package, and we couldn't review the permit until that was done.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that date was. Um, and at that point, I know Eric had sent you the multi-tenant requirements a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so that's, we're kind of waiting on an application by you guys at this point for the multi-tenant sign package.
And here again, so we're just gonna show on that plan all our existing signage and then Luma's proposed signage.
And Eric sent out a guide a couple of weeks ago, uh, that just basically is a template. We're creating this plan, and you can talk directly to him to, um.
But, but we're not creating, I mean, we're creating a, a drawing of existing signage, correct? We're not, I mean, we're not creating.
You don't necessarily, you don't necessarily need to show the existing tenant signage. Uh, you need to show basically your model for how the signs will be designed, so channel letters. If, if we're going this way, mounted to a raceway, you would show like a cross section of the sign.
How many inches it is on the wall.
Have maximum dimensions.
You would show this sign, like this area behind the front.
What, folks, that's what you're saying is I'm gonna take the existing signage, the details of those signs and put them on a multi-signage plan. That's what you're saying.
We want you to put a plan together for future sign replacement. It's the rules for the replacement, and so you wanna have those standards of what each sign would have to combine to.
Okay.
Sign would go, it's not showing things the same times. You would specify the colors, the lighting, the dimensions. Uh, specify that a raceway would, assuming this board is okay with a raceway, what a raceway would be painted to match the facade.
So, so here again.
Their signs.
So thank, yeah, thank you. So point of clarification, you don't want the existing signage on this drawing, right? The facade, I'll call it a facade plan, right? Elevations. You don't want everything you bought, because you just want, would it would be moving down the line, we're gonna show our criteria. Hopefully, you're in agreement, you know, here again, wish thing in our part, that you'll agree with us, even if it might be out of line with your current code, because it sounds like you might be amiable to some of our points, like raceways.
I don't, no, 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 no. It's not that it, we're, we, we are not going to concede that it's out of line with our current code. It's an interpretation of our code, and if this board thinks that it, that it meets the, the criterion with the raceway painted so many feet protruding, then that's the interpretation, and that's what's gonna be on the multi-tenant sign package. So we're not doing anything as a special favor. It's gonna, it's going to be an interpretation of the code. We're gonna have it all on a piece of paper that looks like what it's, looks like here, and it's gonna have a, a, a sample design. And, and if we have that by Thursday, right, get the application, talk to Eric, get all that down, then in, in the two-week period of time to our next meeting, because we're a twice-a-month meeting group here, it can yeah.
Okay, appreciate it.
I just wanna make one more point. The hardest thing for applicants in this is the, the scaled building elevations. So you will need architectural drawings of the strip mall with the sign bands identified.
Oh.
And those need to be prepared by a licensed architect.
I'm, alright, I, I guess I'm confused. I thought you just told us we did not need that.
You, you need scale, so I sent the eleven points on October twenty-fourth. Point eight is the scaled building elevation with dimensions of the sign band.
Okay.
That's why I'm trying to get an architect to join this meeting, because that's typically the most time-intensive piece of this puzzle.
Alright, alright, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. I'll be in touch with Eric. Jamie, I'll copy you on all communications, if that works for you.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Close the work session.